Okay, well, now that our nice little, nice to see each other chatting session. Well, yeah, happy open on date, everybody. I, I will start the more formal portion of our gathering, which is calling this committee of the whole meeting to order for Monday, March twentieth here in beautiful Kalamazoo. And first order of business is the good clerk, Borling, calling the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez.
Present.
Commissioner Prado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you, Clerk Borling. Are there any communications managers, Mr. Ritzma?
No, Your Honor.
All right, so now is the opportunity for public comments for this committee of the whole meeting. Just a reminder that there will be an opportunity for public comments at our regular business meeting this evening that starts at seven o'clock. And how we're going to do the public comments is start with anyone in the chambers who'd like to make a comment. If there's anyone in the chambers, you will have two minutes. Please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city. And I'll see if anyone in the chambers wants to come up. While we're just waiting for that here, I'll just remind people that you can call in and make public comments for this meeting as well. That number is eight 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 three eight two nine five five six. Yes, please, come forward. And there's a place you can sign in after you're done making your comments as well.
All righty, good. All right, hello, everyone. Thank you. My name is Daniel Baer. I live on Grove Street in Kalamazoo. And I just wanted to make a, a public comment on the record regarding the smell that I experienced at my house. I first want to say thank you. I appreciate the work of public servants of the city and the work that you do. I know this is a challenging issue for Kalamazoo that has been going on for a while. But, um, so I live in the West Main Hill neighborhood, and we smell what we believe is odor from graphic packaging in our neighborhood. Seems to be happening more regularly in the past couple of years. And so one, one thing that I've noticed last summer, I went to, my daughter Mara is sitting back there, I brought her tonight, I could smell the odor in her bedroom when I went to get, pick her up for her nap one day. And that was really, to smell it in my house was, was really unsettling. Sometimes when we're having, trying to have dinner outside, it drives us inside of our house because the smell is quite bad and quite unpleasant. So, you know, I want to know, is this primarily, I want to know if this is hurting her. I know this is a much bigger issue too, and I also want to acknowledge that this is a massive issue for North Side residents, for Black residents of Kalamazoo, much more than in my neighborhood, but my neighbors are starting to notice it more. My daughter goes to school at North Side Elementary School. It's also quite strong smell there, so she experiences it there as well. So I hope, eight years ago when I moved to Kalamazoo, I hope I didn't move to what I've heard deemed a sacrifice zone, which is a really unsettling term for environmental justice concerns. I hope this is something, I know this is something the city is taking seriously. I saw in a movie that MLive did, Director Baker stated that there's no acceptable amount of odor for residents of Kalamazoo, so I hope we can have that.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mary Andrew, and I live on Dartmouth Street in West Main Hill neighborhood in Kalamazoo. And I wanted to piggyback off what Dan has already said. I grew up in the area, I grew up in, between Plainwell and Altigo, where we had two active paper mills when I was a kid. And I am now someone with reactive airways disease. I don't know for certain if it's from the paper mills, but I do know that there are a lot of people in the North Side complaining of similar issues with their breathing. And lately, the smells from graphic packaging have been daily. Notably, when I dropped my six-year-old off at, at North Glade, Montessori Magnet School, we went there to get her used to the school playground before school started at the end of the summer. And the pollution was so strong that day that I just had a terrible headache, and I was so unsettled about sending my child there to a place where she doesn't have clean air to breathe while she's playing. And to think of all the residents who, who live right there, it's, it's troubling. And my husband and I try to report the odors as often as we smell them. Because we, we moved away for, I moved away for a bit and lived in Australia, I think I noticed the smell maybe more than people who have never left because it's, it's more, it's more startling to me. It's, it's not something I've become accustomed to yet. And so I do my best to report these odors to Eagle, to the local office. But it is frustrating to, to learn that graphic packaging has expanded and now is, is polluting more often. We notice the smells a lot in the morning, especially like Monday morning, as if maybe production picks up over the weekend. But I am, I'm just concerned about, about the people who are smelling this all the time, and I, and I don't want Kalamazoo to be an example for the rest of the country of environmental injustice. And I think we need to really fight to have pyramid.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers that wants to provide a comment for this public meeting? Seeing no one else at this time, just a reminder, eight 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 three eight two nine five five six is the call-in number. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, do we have anybody that's called in?
We'll go ahead and check right now.
Thank you, as always, DCM Chamberlain. I appreciate you managing that. Now we are down to the work portion of this committee of the whole meeting, and I will turn it over to Manager Jim Ritzma.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good to see everyone again. And tonight, we're going to actually follow up from the retreat that we had about a little over a month ago. And our Chief Operating Officer Laura Lamb and Assistant City Manager Rebecca Kick are going to walk us through the follow-up material and how we're going to plan for next year, 2024. Laura?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Happy to be with y'all tonight. Hard to believe it was a month ago. I'm not sure if it feels like long or short, but time is hard to, to concept. What do you think? There we go. Is it just slow? I'm impatient? We'll see. All right, so for tonight, a couple things. We're going to do a retreat recap. Obviously, for those of you that are there, this will be a reminder. Certainly want to make sure the public is up to speed on the hard work that we did on February eighteenth. We also want to bring you up to speed on what happened after the retreat and, and the work that staff has done to take those ideas and those programs and projects and concepts, really try to work them through to figure out how can we take this work and use it to really advance the 2024 budget process. So we'll give you kind of the results of where we are from that input. We'll spend some time digging into, in particular, the bold action of reducing juvenile victims of gun violence, talk about some of the easy and impactful wins, areas that we still need to explore, and then really wanting to leave here with a clear understanding of how the input that you've all provided is going to shape us up for a good 2024 budget development process. I'm not sure if this is working. All right, we'll keep rolling. So by way of background, even though we, we launched this work February eighteenth, there was a lot of work actually done leading up to that. As you may recall, October, we kicked off a budget training, really trying to familiarize ourselves and remind ourselves of the role of commission and the role of staff and how we work together to produce the budget and ultimately approve the budget. In November, Jim and I met with each of you individually, really to kind of understand from your perspective and from all that you hear from on a daily basis, what are the priorities that we need to be focusing on? In January, we then did surveys to really dive deeper into those themes, asking you, what does success look like? How would you measure it? And really important question, what is the role of the city? We also had in January the results of our community survey come forward and helping us to identify, in particular, areas where we have our residents saying things are really, really important to us, but we see that there's room for improvement for, for the city itself. So we tried to take all that information to really help guide us for the retreat itself. The results were these priority themes. Thank you, Scott. The results, these priority themes, really kind of giving us a sense of where we need to be focusing and how we need to shape the conversations for the retreat itself. So in terms of the retreat itself, as we talked about on that day, we know going into it, when you have hopes and aspirations for our community, it's really difficult to try to translate that into measurable outcomes and then prioritize. So we knew going into it, it was going to be tough work. We also know that our needs are greater than our easily available resources. We know that the city, in order to tackle some of the really complex projects and programs that are out there, we're going to have to have the cooperation of our partners to do that well. We also know that we constantly have to balance our community aspirations with the core services, the programs and projects that our residents expect from us every day. And I think we kind of held that tension very well as we jumped into the retreat. We know this is hard work, but we know that this hard work of aligning our priorities around the most impactful actions that the city can take is really going to yield positive results. So that was really the, the retreat goals focused on that, that very thing. How do we align? How do we focus? How do we get a clear picture that can you, we can use as sort of a template to get us the 2024 budget? And really with that, the retreat really launched us into the twenty-two, 2024 budget development. In terms of the framework, we had a facilitator, Ashley Kletke, who brought forward a framework to really help us think about our goals and our outcomes, the commission's goals and outcomes, and how we can use those for staff to develop strategies and measures. So this idea, the G O S M framework, goals, outcomes, strategy, and measures. We also would be remiss if we didn't mention Imagine Kalamazoo in every presentation, so we wanted to make sure we kept front and center that as we talk about these priorities, you can see that they are very grounded and very much in alignment with our overall ten strategic goals. At the retreat itself, we, we actually set up nine tables. We had each of the ten topics represented, and here's a sample of one of the matrices at the table that allowed commission to go to the tables of most interest, allow them to review the materials, allow them to kind of jot down additional outcomes, and really the work of those tables led us into our next exercise. So as we got the outcomes, the most important outcomes, grab those on post-it notes, and that set us up for probably the hardest work of the day, which was looking at impact and difficulty of each of those outcomes. So in impact, we wanted to think about how many lives are touched here? How many people are going to benefit from this? We want to understand sort of how much are we moving the dial? Does this, this work itself tie in to an overarching strategy of the city that we've already committed to? And then from a difficulty standpoint, how many resource, how much resources are needed, right? What's the role of the city? Can we directly influence this outcome? What's the magnitude of change we're talking about? So this work led us into impact and difficulty, one by one by one by one, of assessing impact of an individual outcome and then trying to assess the difficulty. So the results of all that hard work, we ended up with fifteen bold actions, fifteen easy and impactful actions, eight in the explorer category, and two in the parking lot category. So that's where we left off with the retreat, exhausted. I felt accomplished, but we knew that it was just the beginning of the work. So following that retreat, we had actually convened a large portion of staff to really dive in, dive into the details, to be able to look at kind of what came from the commission and then start asking some questions. We know for the bold action, the charge was, what's one bold action we want to accomplish in 24? That left fourteen other items that we felt very strongly about that didn't make the cut. So how do we look at those actions and figure out, can we adjust the scale? Can we adjust the scope? Can this be scaled? Can this be phased? So really trying to unpack each of those items to understand how might we advance this in 24? Or how might we set this up for success in future years? With regard to the easy, you know, I had a couple of conversations with the directors at the retreat, and I kept saying, don't be heroes, be real, be real. But I love our staff because in the moment, any one of them will say, I can do this one thing. But we had to ask about the compounding effect. If you've got twenty-seven easy wins on your plate, is it still easy? So we really, we were, we're trying to be that can-do attitude, but also trying to be real with what does it look like for us to say, can we actually do this? So we went through and tried to kind of figure out, okay, what can be done? What can be done with existing resources? What's going to require additional resources? And how do we use that for the 2024 budget? So with that, we'll share with you kind of some details on the bold action. I've got Assistant Chief Jude, that's here, that's going to walk you through that top item, reducing juvenile victims of gun violence. And then Assistant City Manager Kick is going to walk you through easy wins, both planned, we know we can do this, we've identified resources already. And then those easy wins that we know we're going to have to look into the budget process to identify resources. We'll talk about areas that we still need to explore and areas even further where we got to do a lot more work to get to. And then before we leave, we'll be able to talk with you about how all of this work gets incorporated into the budget process. So this is the result of staff analysis. We still have that bold action, but we see that we've moved, we've shifted some things around. Parking lot felt like where things go to die. We didn't like that as a term, right? That to me says to you all, we're going to forget about this, and that is most certainly not the case. We said, no, this is under review. We want this to be an active action. We still got to work through some of these items, and so we want to make sure we keep that still in the, in the active phase as opposed to put aside and forget about for later. So with that, I'd like to have Assistant Chief Jude up here to talk to you a little bit about public safety and their bold action.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, welcome, Assistant Chief. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor. City Manager, City Attorney, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me, and thank you for allowing me to take part in the retreat that we had what seemed like not too long ago, but in reality, it was about thirty days ago. You identified all through different analysis and conversations that day, one of the items is a bold action. Also identified an easy and impactful outcome and then exploring opportunity for us here at public safety. The bold action that you all came up with, that you wanted Public Safety to look into is reduce juvenile victims of gun violence by fifty percent. Although I believe it is reachable, it is a tall order, and it's not only Public Safety that is going to be able to accomplish this goal by themselves. We play one layer in this, and we are one leg of the table. And it's when we all work together with not only Public Safety, but outreach and community partners that we're all going to be able to succeed. And I'm going to highlight some of those here very shortly. So looking at how we're going to accomplish this, one, it's got to be a balanced approach between not only outreach, but enforcement. With the outreach initiatives, we have several now that are in place and that we're currently working on. I think that a lot of those outreach initiatives are very successful, although they're adaptive. And then there's a lot of things that come up, like a pandemic, that reduce on some of the things that we have to do. So continuing on and continuing to mold those initiatives and being able to work around some of those are going to be very impactful. And I'd like to highlight some of those outreach initiatives that we're currently doing. One of those is working with our Parks and Rec Department, with our Police Athletic League. The Police Athletic, Athletic League currently has sixteen things on the schedule, or sixteen items and, what I would say, different events or programs throughout the summer, and we're going to get into those in a little bit. Bridging Opportunities, Bridging Opportunities is a program that we've been working on for several years, and I've got some friends of mine here from the Boys and Girls Club that have come up here and talked with the, just a little bit more in a few minutes about the successes and some of, maybe some of the hurdles that they've seen from the Boys and Girls Club and partnering with us with the Bridging Opportunities. Group Violence Intervention is probably the longest-standing program that we have been working on with reducing gun violence. I'll get into that a little bit more, but Group Violence Intervention was really geared towards adults and reducing gun violence with adults, but we have been able to take that and mold it and adapt it to work with some of our juveniles and, because we know that right now the juveniles are driving our gun violence in the city. With all that being said, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we're currently doing without our community partners. And I know there's a lot of community partners out there. I would like to highlight just a couple of them that we are working with, if not daily, but weekly. The Boys and Girls Club, first and foremost, like I said, we have some representatives from the Boys and Girls Club that are working with us with our Bridging Opportunities program. Urban Alliance, Isaac, Griffin Place, and the Kalamazoo Community Foundation is currently working with a long-term strategy that, to reduce gun violence through prevention initiatives. And there are working sessions, I know that several of you have gone through the initial phase and initial training and meeting, and then there's workout sessions, and I believe the second work session for Group One is this week. So I'm very excited to be able to share information and come up with a long-term strategy that's going to last long after we are all gone, that kind of sets the foundation for those that are going to be following. With enforcement, one, one of the strategies that we really are looking at and that has been working for us is our focus deterrence. And I'll get into focus deterrence a little bit more, but, you know, there's really five things that focus deterrence does for us, and one thing, five things that we look at. One, we want to identify who those who are at risk that are involved with gun violence. We have some type of intervention with those individuals that we identify. So once we have that intervention, that could look like a call-in, it could look like a mediation, so we've identified them, we've brought them in, tried to do some type of intervention with them. We then provide them services for those that want to change. And again, this is kind of molded around our GVI strategy. Fourth, we look at community members and how community members can provide that ongoing support to those individuals that are listed at at-risk, and then also the, at the very end, enhanced enforcement on group or persons that persist in that crime if they don't want to assist with those other four categories. So with that all being said, I'd like to, I have the clicker, sorry. So I want to show you some statistics on, you know, what are we currently doing, what do we need to mold and change, and is the things that we are currently doing working? And so just looking at the shooting statistics from two thousand sixteen to end of twenty twenty-two, you'll see that in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, really when we were starting that GVA model and the things are really starting to get off the ground, there was some great work that was being done. And then you'll see this huge spike in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. We all know that during that timeframe, we had the pandemic, and what happened? Everything shut down, right? Our social services shut down, our resources shut down, we stopped doing in-person meetings, we, the courts were delayed, we had limited staffing, we were working off minimum staffing at Public Safety, the jail had to reduce staffing and reduce the amount of people that were in the jail. And so again, with those resources that were shut down, we had this huge spike in shooting incidents. And that's not only, that is not looking just at Kalamazoo. I was recently at a neighboring department just outside of Michigan, and we're comparing what happened pre, during, and post-pandemic, and it was like looking in a mirror. The, the incidents were almost exactly the same. So this is across the country, this is not something that's just in Kalamazoo. So at the end of twenty twenty-two, you'll see that the, the shooting incidents, we're getting back to our normal strategies and initiatives, and we were able to decrease the shooting incidents and violence, and we were moving in the right direction by the end of twenty twenty-two. If we continue to look at those stats for the last three months, you'll see a significant decrease. And I don't have those up here today, but I have a couple other statistics that I'll show you. Currently, we're, we're trending in the right direction. Looking at violent crimes over the last, not only in the last seven days, the last twenty-eight days, really what I would want, the number that I want to bring to your attention is in the lower right-hand corner, and that is our year-to-date totals. And it looks like as of last week, Monday, those numbers are, violent crime has decreased by sixteen percent. Again, that's a year-to-date. This is the same from last Monday, same statistics. Assaults with firearms were currently down thirty-two percent year-to-date. One of the other categories that you identified that we looked at, it was going to be in the category of easy and impactful, was increase the number of at-risk youth in city programming by ten percent. So this is a little bit more difficult, just looking at it on the face, because we didn't have that data in the past. So we didn't know how many at-risk youth were involved in city programming. So we're, I was able to work with our crime analysts, our crime analyst, to identify individuals that would be listed as at-risk. And at-risk doesn't mean you have to be an offender. At-risk could be you're a victim, or a witness, or involved with those individuals. And so we wanted to really identify those individuals that were at risk and how we're going to be able to get them into city programming and what that looked like. So once we have the data and we're able to identify those individuals, and I get a printout every Monday morning of individuals who have had two or more police contacts within the last thirty days. And so I go through each one of those individuals' cases to look and see what they're involved with and how we can get them the resources and get them into city programming. And one of the ways that we identified is I'm working with Parks and Rec and our Police Athletic League Coordinator, Johnny Berry, to look at that list, find those kids, and then we're going to go, take that information to them. And so we have come up with a schedule for the Police Athletic League programs, the different trainings that they're doing, and we're going to go right to those kids with some community partners to share that information with them and pass along those activities. So through that data, I was able to look at it, and this is from last Monday's data, there are thirty-nine youth that are currently have two or more police contacts in the last thirty days. Also, we're working with CPS to identify some of those individuals who are going to be at, are listed as at-risk, to make sure that those individuals also have the correct information to get into city programming. Lastly, we have the twenty, twenty twenty-three Bridging Opportunities Program. So this program has been something that's been in the works for quite a few years now, and you'll see that the number eight represents the number of kids that are involved in the program. These kids are what I would consider just maybe a little bit more than at-risk, they've benefited, as, you know, they've been offenders in some of the programs, they're victims in some things, but they would, they're also involved in the juvenile court system. And Bridging Opportunities Program is something that we work with the juvenile probation, juvenile courts, the judges, and then community like Boys and Girls Club to bring these kids in, to really mold these individuals and mentor them and give them the additional resources that they need. This isn't a short-term program like PAL that's maybe just a few weeks. Bridging Opportunities Program will go up to thirty-eight weeks, and there's actually one individual that is going to be in a year-around program. So it's something that's very neat. Of the eight individuals that are listed or going to be in the twenty twenty-three program, you'll see collectively they have three hundred and twenty-five police involvements. That is. That is, police reports, arrests, and cases, which is a very significant number. I was very surprised on the number of those eight individuals, and again, that just goes back to ask us individually is, are we getting the right kids in the right programs and giving them the right resources? And I think that through working with our crime analyst, we have identified those individuals, and working with juvenile probation, we have been able to identify those individuals that are the most at-risk and that need the resources that we're looking to provide to them. This is a list of individual kids and kind of their history and what they're involved with. And then if you look at the far-right side, it shows that the number of cases they've been involved with law enforcement. Again, 325 collectively. At the most, there was one young person who had 85 police contacts since they've been having contact with the law enforcement. So very troubling number and a number that I believe that we can reduce through different programming. And looking at the past history of Bridging Opportunities, we've had a tremendous impact on these young people. And at this time, I'd like to bring you up my friends from Boys and Girls Club, Matt and Lindsay. If you allow them just to speak on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club and the work that they're doing with Bridging Opportunities and some of the hurdles that they've had to overcome and some of the, and before we get to the next slide and look at some of the outcomes that we've had with the kids that are going through that program, just wanted to have them say a few words. Matt?
Thank you, and I appreciate being with all of you this evening.
Welcome, Mr. Forkin. Hey, would you go ahead to introduce your partner here and give us your last name as well?
Matt Forkin, Boys and Girls Club, and Lindsay Rowell, Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
So I appreciate everything Assistant Chief Jude has said, and can't echo the sentiments enough about how important this program has been for our organization. You'll see in the second year, some of the data that we've had from the 2022 year, since we've extended the program into a full-year model. For a long time, it was eight weeks in the summer. We did really great things in those, in those eight weeks, and we'd see social-emotional learning games, and we'd see a reduce in police contacts on both sides of what being a police contact can be. But what we've seen by extenuating, extending the program into from 32 to 38 weeks has been incredible. You'll see some of those outcomes that we've seen that we'll, we'll see here today, but the long-term ripple effect of this can be monumental. And so we just wanted to say thank you for the, for the ability to be able to do this because without the city's support and without KDPS's support, there would be no way it would be possible. But as we continue to grow this program, we continue to find the foundation. I truly believe that it has the power to change young people's lives and give them the advocacy and autonomy that all young people should have, but we're proud of the work that we're doing here. We know there's a lot to learn along the way, but we work with young people that have stories and that have lives outside of the Boys and Girls Club that can be more challenging than most of the things that we've ever faced as adults in this room. And so while the statistics are, they're great to be able to see to understand the full picture, being able to work with these young people every day and understand sometimes the tragedies and the triumphs and the things that we need to surround our young people with, the love, the resources, to keep pushing them forward and moving them on, that our young people don't have to solve their problems themselves, that they don't need to be their own advocate all the time, that there are people that are here that care. And by providing the funding, by providing the resources, by providing the support, that's what it's showing these young people. And so again, I appreciate all of your, all of your service, sort of making this happen. But it'll be something that we'll stay committed to as an organization and look forward to working with you all in the future on this project.
Thank you.
And I want you guys to stay up here while we go to this next slide because this just shows the outcomes of the hard work that they're doing, and so these are the 2022 pre-programming cases and post-programming cases. Just looking at each individual case, and this is information that was pulled from last week. Just collectively, pre-programming cases, they had, of the eight individuals, 161 collective cases and then 13 arrests, and then post-programming, which ended just over three weeks ago, there were seven collective cases where they had police contact and three arrests. And you'll look at that post-programming arrests, all but one had zero arrests. And so that's just, you know, very fortunate to be able to work with community to share information and be able to get the right kids in the right programs for the right reasons. So thank you very much, Boys and Girls Club.
Thanks, your work. Appreciate it.
I want to go back to the PAL or Police Athletic League just a little bit. This is a list of some of the events that they have going on. Like I said, there's 15 currently scheduled throughout the summer. We've got some of the programs have already started or in the early phases of starting. I would like to highlight that one of the programs that are started right now is at Maple Middle Street, I'm sorry, Maple Street Middle School, and that, that is the boxing clinic where they're doing endurance training and they're working on fundamentals of boxing. One of the teachers there is one of the coaches, and it's a great program. I had some of our staff members go there, do the endurance training with the kids, and they said, man, it is a workout. They were very sore the next day, but our community policing unit got to go there with the middle school students and do some of that endurance training with them, and they absolutely loved it. Great for building those relationships. One thing that we had a staff meeting today with our executive team for the recruiting team, and we talked about that we wanted our recruiters to be more involved with the Police Athletic League because that's our next generation of city employees, and we want to make sure that they're staying engaged and they have the resources and the information available to them. So our recruiting team, our community policing team, and then our patrol division is going to be doing more activities and being seen out there with our, our activities throughout the summer with the Police Athletic League. I won't go through all of the programs that we have throughout the summer, but just to highlight a few of them. Boxing, like I said, is going on now. We've got soccer starting very soon, flag football, fishing with the DEA, and then there's some youth football combines that will be getting started very shortly. Midsummer, we have a lot of basketball leagues for kids and adults, and then to end with some football leagues and some basketball and wrestling. So great work that Parks and Rec and Mr. Johnny Berry is doing with the Police Athletic League. All right, and lastly, in the Explore category, and this is kind of a hot topic, and I know, Mr. Mayor, we have talked about this offline a couple of different times and how it's very impactful when people do Google searches and look at Kalamazoo, and if you can see Kalamazoo on a list and where we're ranked. So I've done some research on this, and I think that we can, one, approve on our ranking, if you will, but just looking at a lot of those websites that list or rank different cities and municipalities, there's some warnings on the, the different places that collect this data. So looking at this, like the state of Michigan, who collects the microcodes and the crime data, and then looking at the FBI who also collects the crime data, there's some warnings that they put on their website for the general public to have know and for people who are collecting the data. And I'd like to read those warnings to you tonight, just so that you can make it fair that there are so many different variables out there when collecting this data that could skew a city or a ranking and where they could be ranked at. And so those, the Michigan Incident Crime Reporting Warning states, "Users are cautioned against performing trend analysis or ranking agencies or cities." And then the FBI, also their Uniform Crime Reporting, also warns, stating, "The FBI has longstanding policy against ranking participating law enforcement agencies on the basis of crime data alone. Despite the repeated warnings against these practices, some data users continue to challenge the misunderstanding this position." Now although there are these warnings that are out there, again, some data collectors still rank cities based on those warnings, and that's where you see, you know, if you look up, if you just Google the top 10 most dangerous cities in Michigan, every one of those individual websites has a city ranked in a different spot because they are basing their data and their research on different variables, and because there's so many different variables, it puts us in a different spot. So what are we doing with the data that we are reporting out? One thing that I, one way that I believe that we can reduce or get off that top 10 list is an internal audit, review, audit, and training. So currently, our staff reports manually, and I believe that there's some human error in some of the reporting. And we, our goal is to make sure that we are reporting the most accurate data that we can. We're also reviewing crime data and the different trends. We're reducing crime through focus deterrence and then supporting, having a supported record management system. So currently, our record management system does not automatically send over the crime data, something like I said, they have to manually input, and that has to be inputted by the first of March every year. And then there's a hard stop at March 1st. So if a municipality, let's say anywhere Michigan, reports their data and they're only at 65% completion on reporting their data, at that March 1st date, that's a hard stop. So only 65% is reported. So that may move them from a top 10 to a top, you know, 75. And so that is incomplete data, and I think that is, we are very efficient and we do a good job getting our data recorded in a timely manner. Also, we report all of our data accurately. So I think that part of what the problem is, one, we may be over-reporting, and again, that's where that review and audit and training comes in to play. To give an example of over-reporting, take larceny as an example. If we're all shopping at a, for Christmas, and we're all, three of us are all together, and we leave items in the vehicle, and we go into another store, and somebody breaks into the car and steals all of our items, there's three victims there, right? Three individuals, personal property, but it's one incident. So the incident is reported as one, but if they are, if I'm having a human error and reporting it as three separate incidents, it's going to show three separate larcenies. So again, during that review, audit, and training process, training our staff to make sure that they're not over-reporting, and we have found some errors just of recent that we were over-reporting. So we need to make sure that we're just correctly doing that. And that is it for my presentation, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Nice to have you here. Questions, Commissioners, this time? I guess not at this time. Thank you, Assistant Chief Jude.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the other data that got sorted that Laura started to discuss with you. So the easy and impactful, so these were the items that staff felt, as you, as we prioritized on how impactful they would be and then how difficult they would be, many of these things were already ongoing. Their programs that were already been supporting, or we knew that they already had funding available. So for example, we've been doing youth programs, so we, we've had that in our easy and impactful. However, all of these items still need funding. So our staff will still be putting forward special budget requests so that we can still rank which of these gets funded. And that goes for all of these programs as well, which include the Gun Violence Intervention programs, other sidewalk programs, DEI, and youth. We do have some that we, again, have ongoing programs or are already funded. For example, our lead services replacement, we are mandated to do 500 lead services. We have the funding to do that, however, materials or supplies could change that number, right? So we have the funding there. If everything goes well, we could certainly meet that number, but this is something that we would report out to you. That in addition to our 28 homes for lead paint remediation, we have the funding for that through our HUD Lead Hazard Grant, and we would be able to complete those, again, pending all of the labor and materials and work to do that as well. A couple other in our communications that we felt could be easy wins for increasing likes on our city page and increasing good media exposure. Now in the Explore category, these are ones that staff really needs, when we had our retreat, we started to think through strategies. What could we change in terms of scale or scope, adjusting targets, or breaking up the scope for success? And so when, when we went through each of these, these are going to need more exploration and obviously would also need more funding. So these might get broken up into multiple planning, planning year, and then an execution year as well. So know that we are tracking these ones in our Explore category, but the scale and the scope needs to be adjusted to make it easier for us to complete. And then lastly, the most difficult ones that are under review, many of these were in the Bold Action category. This is where either significant data, partnerships, further planning, or needs to be broken into multiple stages. So when staff looked over each of these, because they weren't directly in the sphere of influence of the city necessarily, we felt like we needed to be sure to contact other partners, make sure that we could move these forward for success. So the most number, which is 17 of the projects and priorities that you had ranked. And then the other part of this was, we took into consideration how you voted on many of these, why they didn't end up in Explore, but may have ended up in the Under Review category, was because it didn't get any votes. And so we took that also as a, all right, if this is a major priority for you, we will also bring it down on the Under Review list, as opposed to something that was in Explore, which got more votes. And then you should have all of these listed in front of you if you have any questions about any of those individually that you would like to discuss.
Questions, Commissioners? Vice Mayor Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have, I have a number of them. Under Safe Community Environmental Justice, Reduce the Community Odor Impact. Okay, we've been hearing about that already. The night we've been hearing about. My question is, is the odor, which is terrible, a symptom? It's a symptom of something deeper that's making people sick. Are we looking at that? Are we exploring that? I mean, if we're going to make a safe community, I think we first have to define the problem. I know, I'm not sure that we've really defined the problem, what's making people sick, and, and I've been hearing that we're waiting for the state to come back and come back, but I, I think we have to really dig in this year to define that problem.
Right, and so the one goal that we do have that is on our list, which is to reduce the community odor impact from the wastewater treatment plant for the work that we're doing there. That's in our sphere of influence, and that's what we're doing. But absolutely, I would have to have Director Baker discuss the rest of the Odor Task Force or work that would be, would be done outside of that scope.
Okay, okay. I wanted to ask about the housing thing. This really sounds great. It's very ambitious, though. Let's see, back here. Could you, what is the Kalamazoo Attainable Homes Initiative?
So the Kalamazoo Attainable Homes Initiative is the work that we've been doing for the last three years with Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services and the Local Initiative Support Corporation, along with the Pathways Home Project through Open Doors. So we've been building anywhere between 10 and 14 homes per year for the last three years. So we felt that right now, increasing that by 30%, so 10 homes to 13 homes, or, you know, being able to increase that would be a reasonable increase. So because we already have the partnership, we've had that program working already, and so it would be going back to our partners, making sure that we could meet that increase, and then asking for the appropriate amount of budget. and then asking for the appropriate amount of budget to be able to meet that increase.
Good, thank you. Okay. And you had another thing on housing here that I wanted to ask you about.
Sure.
If I can find that. Okay. 300 multifamily housing units.
Yes.
How's that going to happen?
So this year we have planned to do 355 housing units. And the reason that this is an explore is because, so for 2023, we had a pipeline of folks coming in. We had two low income housing task credit projects and then we had other developers that we've been working with for the last couple of years. The reason this is an explore is so that we can go back to some of our developers, look at our pipeline, make sure that we can succeed at getting 300 units online. It's quite possible, but we just need to make sure that we, we plan for it appropriately. And then again, we also understand what the budget ask for that would be to actually follow through with 300 units and what that would look like. Again, Sherilyn Parsons, our housing development coordinator, when she presented to you on the housing strategy, she had some rough calculations about how much it costs to invest in a multifamily unit versus a single family unit. And we could have that breakdown for you also, because I know during our conversations at the retreat with some of the commissioners, we talked about the need for an array of housing from duplexes to fourplexes, sixplexes, single family homes. So when we come back with a full budget proposal, we would have that 300 units broken out and have a cost alongside of that.
Okay, thank you. I just have one more. And that's under share prosperity youth, all youth exposed to the trades profession. Do we have any word on when that K RISA trade school is going to be in action?
That I don't have information on, no. And, and this is something that's in our under review and so that's certainly something I could get in touch with you and...
I mean, that's not the only thing we could do with that. I mean, there's plenty of other ways that we can expose people to trade you, but I know that would be a major kind of thing, but Commissioner Hess knows.
Right. And I think that that's where, yeah, we would like to see which partners are already working with you, where are they already there and how can we just partner to be able to expose them in the way that you're talking about? Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Cooney, I, I did hear 24, 25, the building would be up and running and complete. And along with that programming through K RISA. And I had a meeting today at room 35 and they're doing these, there's, we have all kinds of people in this town that are doing things in the trades that I think if they all were able to convene, oh, maybe through the city, be a convener of these folks that are working in the trades, with the trades, with youth, we can, we can really make a dent in all of this.
Great. Yeah, I know that the, the unions are very interested in this, meeting with young people and exposing them to these things. But that's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Decker.
So I apologize for my absence at the retreat, but we had a chance to sit down with Laura and Jim. And I think the biggest thing for me when it comes to how the community views this is the strategicness behind it, right? Knowing what the city is capable of doing, right? And doing that to the best of our ability, which we see that on paper, like, okay, these are the things we're already doing that they talked about the retreat, that we can say, okay, we can put that in that category and we can say, we're, we're making gains and grounds there. But also when you look at the review, the, the under review part, I think it's very important for the community to really look at that section because it's a section where we need the community to step in and step up into. The city can only do so much, right? And I think when it comes to the core services, I mean, we do pretty good. Well, I mean, we're one of the only cities that can say by 2035, we're going to have every lead pipe removed from the house, right? And that is a huge accomplishment. And to have a goal like that is astronomical, right? We can manage that. We can do that work. But there are some things that the city just can't do. Now that doesn't mean we shouldn't be involved. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be, you know, giving support to individuals or to organizations or to churches or to businesses to take the lead on such a thing, like reducing poverty and, and, you know, closing the reading gap, right? That's something we as commissioners have to really champion and, and get out there and get people inspired to do something. I am very, just, you know, blown away about the work you guys do. You know, Jim, you and your team, your team makes you look really good. I just want you to know that. That Laura, you guys do a phenomenal job at making Jim look really great, right? And Jim, your leadership, you know, you could see it. But it's obvious that there's a gap between what we can accomplish as a community when it comes to this strategic planning stuff, right? As a city, I mean. And then what can we accomplish more as a community when it comes to collective impact, right? And so I think for us as a, as a, as a team up here, we have to look at it and say, okay, these things made it in the under review section. Why and who can we help get into that position to make a difference? I, I'm like, the city doesn't have to be the champions at everything. We, we don't have to be like, put our name on, no, it doesn't have to be that. The city can take a backseat on some of this stuff, right? And, and give way to creating an, like an atmosphere and ecosystem where others can thrive and grow and even teach us. We're not experts. We only know what we know, Director Baker, right? We only know what we know and we do good at it, right? We're really good at it, right? When I think about Director Baker, man, I think he's like really good at his job, right? Because he knows what he knows, right? And there's some things in the review, in the under review part where it's like, okay, I don't know how to do that, but I know there's somebody out there who does and somebody who's probably willing to do the work and get us in a better place as a community. And so I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I think it's, you know, it's up to us as commissioners to help support the under review stuff.
Thank you.
Super, super helpful, Commissioner Morris. I appreciate that. Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank everyone in the team for putting this together. It was a great, great time on that Saturday and I think we all came to kind of an understanding of certain things that we wanted to see move forward in the city. So I'm looking at some of the ones for the easy and impactful, if funding is available. I feel that we're going to be able to get a lot of funding for some of these because we now have a new grants team member that'll be able to help us out with that. Everly, her name's Amanda?
Amanda.
Amanda, so that is awesome. So I think bringing that position on is really going to allow us to go after some of these funds to get some more of this work done. And the easy and impactful, I just noticed, you know, communication and community relations. Again, Commissioner Prado and Deputy, Deputy Director, or Deputy Lamb has been working together to get that stuff out to the neighborhood associations. I do, I know it says plan for 2024, but I think that there's good stuff that happens every day. There's no reason, I don't think that we shouldn't be able to kind of up that increase a little bit while we're still here in 2023, Mr. Smith?
Oh, definitely. Things will be happening in 2023, but this is just our planning for the budget in 24. We got to make sure we...
Get that in there.
Prepared for that, yep.
When you talk about the explorer, I really like the sustainability for the Beehive. And as Commissioner Morris says, there's other individuals and organizations that are doing things. And I think that once we start to explore that one more, I feel that there are places like say, again, the Boys and Girls Club, Girl Scout of Southwest Michigan, that we can probably reach out to and be like, hey, let's work together on this. And but let them lead that.
Absolutely.
Um, and then for the under the review, again, you guys captured pretty much everything that we said and I love that format because we had everything on the sticky notes and whatnot. I do know for, in the environmental and responsibility, we have on there increased residential usage of solar panels by 10%. I think that could be something we take, you know, a closer look at also, only because I know within the Energy and Environmental Policy Committee in Lansing that they're actually pushing to get that moved forward, to be able to get better discounts to the residents in Michigan. So.
That's fantastic.
I like that. You guys did a great job. I appreciate everything you put together for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other thoughts or comments about this? Commissioner Hess.
Just one brief comment. Having listened to Missy Stoltz, I don't know if you had a chance to listen to her from Ann Arbor. She's the Sustainability Coordinator for Ann Arbor for A20. On Saturday, she was at the library and fantastic stuff. And again, rose the red flag about environment and environmental sustainability. And I would love for us, as we work into IK 30, 2035, the sustainability pretty much drives that bus because we need to get on board. And I love that we're looking at converting the city fleet. They've kind of done that in Ann Arbor, so, come on, Kalamazoo, we can do this. So just, I, I want to thank you for your work and this is wonderful and it's all been moved. One of the things that Missy did say, we talked about planting 500 trees. That's in our, what you say, our sphere of influence, right? Our sphere of influence is, you know, it's city property, the right of way. However, they have a program where they can provide trees for people for their private property. And I, I think that we can, you know, we can increase it and we can increase our tree canopy by using and collaborating with all the people in the city. So, thanks for everything, Rebecca.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I just want to go back and also bring the recognition to Assistant Chief Dude, when he talks about the PELs and the GBI, the bridging opportunities. These are all geared towards our youth and that, if I believe correctly, was our number one sticky note that had red dots on it.
Bold action.
And yes, that was our bold action and I appreciate you guys coming and coming forth and talking about what you guys are working on and continuing to work on because the numbers do show that over the time, things are decreasing. And again, I believe it is with our intervention, the city's intervention, our public safety and all of the organizations here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. So just, we're not at the end of our presentation yet, just so everybody knows that. All right, so we got a little bit more to go. Any other comments? Every other comedian, my friend.
Yeah, I'd like to turn it back over to Chief Operating Officer Lamb so she can wrap it up and give you your next steps.
Thank you.
All right. So one of the things that was actually surprising to us as we sort of took apart all the input and put it back together is we managed to hit each of the priority areas, but not just hit it in their broadest theme. We now know under those broad themes, we've got very specific outcomes that we've identified that staff can now look to create strategies and measures. So we know we came from the five priorities and those served us well, but we talked at the retreat that when we're too broad, we can all be thinking that we're working on the same housing goal, only to find out that we've got different goals. I think what's helpful is we can look and say, the priority themes we started with were affirmed, they remain, but rather than leave them in this broad form, we can now go under each of those and say, we know as a, as a team, gun violence reduction is important across the board, but we know for 24, priority number one is we want to keep our youth safe. And we're, obviously, we know our public safety partners and our team, we're going to work across all fronts, but we know that we need to have additional work and support in that area. So it's exciting to see that we, we covered our bases, but we know under each of those bases that we've got work to do. We know what success looks like and now we have to figure out the strategies and how we measure that success. So as we've talked about, the priorities, the outcomes that emerged from the retreat are going to inform the special request process, which is going to be kicking off in April. We also know that now that we have a clear sense of those priorities, this is actually, should be an easier process. Go back to those five priorities. We, last year, I think, had over 120 special requests submitted. Staff doing a ton of work, putting these requests together, more staff doing a ton of work reviewing these proposals. And we know we don't have enough resources to even begin to come close. That's a lot of work left on the table when we have staff that want to be doing that work in the community. So now that we've got a clear sense of where you are all, the most important outcomes, we can likely reduce those number of requests to focus where they're most needed, have less time on the paperwork going in, less time reviewing, more time to get to the work. So that's just another reminder that when we do the hard work upfront, we are hoping that's going to pave the way for smoother work throughout the budget process. So Rebecca mentioned easy impactful outcomes, those themselves can go right into the special request process. We know in the explorer category, we have some things we have to unpack a little bit and pick some of those into special request. And then certainly with under review, we want to make sure we're clear, what steps can we take right now to advance? Having conversations with community partners, what might we do now to set these up for bold actions in 25 and beyond? So the work's going to keep continuing. Also want to acknowledge that we will have requests coming in from departments. You all spend time approving plans we bring before you. We want to make sure that we're fulfilling those commitments. So we will certainly prioritize these outcomes we've discussed tonight. We'll also look at requests coming in from the departments and how those projects could align with those themes we just talked about. So you've got kind of multiple opportunities for your input to shape our budget. So we keep saying why this focus is important, right? We want to have impact and we want to make the best use of our resources. And we have to acknowledge that although we still have ARPA funds we're working through, we have a lot of ideas, we have a lot of plans and those, that big pot of money starts to dwindle when you start to, start to pack, unpack those dollars year after year. We also know, and we've had conversations all throughout last year, that the Foundation for Excellence with regard to aspirational project dollars might look different in 24. The board meeting they just had recently, there was discussion that that aspirational project budget might be zero, right? We know that we have an endowment, the board is, is, is set to protect the endowment, to build the endowment, so the FFE model can continue in perpetuity. If that's the case, we have to be very mindful that that decision could then put burdens on our ARPA funds and our CIP dollars and our DEDMOL fund dollars. So I don't, I say that just as a reality check, that that's why this focus work is so important, is if we've got less resources to work with, we want to make sure we're targeting at the most important places. We also know last year, you guys approved, or this year, you approved your 23 budget and we had some tentative multi-year plans for ARPA. We now need to revisit some of those assumptions based on the conversations that we've been having and to take the priorities that we've talked about and say, to what extent might we need to adjust our multi-year budget? We know at the end of 24, we have to have all of our ARPA funds planned for and we know we have to have them spent by the end of 26. So this work is going to serve us really well to come for you for a 24 budget as well as that multi-year finalized. So in terms of next steps, I mentioned to you the work, staff's going to keep at it. We want to make sure we continue to keep checking in with you all, knowing that there's times where we go behind the curtain and do work. We benefit by letting you all know, what we've been, let you all know what we've been up to, so those periodic check-ins can make sure that we're moving on the same path. We'd envision probably June, we can come back and do more of a formal update. Here's where we are, here's where we are with the special request process. But we also plan on using your check-ins with Jim and periodic opportunities we had to talk with you all, just to make sure that you know what we're doing, you know the outcomes, you know where we're trending and then to continue to get your input. The budget request process is launching next April. I'm sure, is this April? Next month? I'm sure staff's very excited about that process, but as I mentioned, they might be celebrating the fact that there's less, less requests to turn in because we've got good focus, but we'll continue to work through the numbers, we'll continue to work with you all, continue to provide updates. And with that, we are done. I'd be happy to take more questions than what you've already shared with Assistant Manager Kik.
Thank you, Laura Lamb. I appreciate it. Questions for Laura Lamb at this point that haven't already been answered? So I don't see it this time. Hey, I just, just want to make a comment here, just to remind all of us, of course, and everybody who's watching, is that this retreat and this work is about beginning, I would be very sure that we're clear about this. We're not trying to figure out what we're doing this We're not trying to figure out what we're doing this year. We did an extensive process that began last year and went through, our date in January, we approved this year's budget. Our calendar year is our fiscal year. It started January 1st, goes through December 31st. So we have a budget and activities funded by that budget that are approved for this year. And certainly, there's always opportunity for rethinking and some adjustment, but the momentum to create the basis for programs is having some certainty about you have a budget and you can use staff time to execute on that budget, knowing that the plan is set. So what we're talking about here is beginning to build as, in an effective way as possible, our aspirations and what that looks like in a 2024 budget. So thank you for doing this work, your whole team here, the whole city team. I just want to say one other thing that I want to tag on the end of that because I just want to make sure about our language. And I appreciate, you know, Rebecca Kick talking about what, using maybe terminology, you know, we're going to build 135 housing units this year or something. So I just want to make sure that in that discussion, we is the greater we. It is the community we when we talk like that, that the city itself is not building, owning, managing housing. We, and basically, how do we even get to a number like that? It is through leveraging of other resources and working with our partners. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about this work, and I know we're all aware of it, this is, much of this work still is work that is not necessarily, it's city, not necessarily city-driven, it's city-assisted. And without the great partners, and we had some of our partners here with us tonight on our bold action, but without our partners in every single area, all the work that happens in community, then we wouldn't have the luxury of standing up here and saying, hey, here's great things that are happening in the city. So I want to recognize all our partners, all the leveraging that occurs, and just make sure that, I guess, when it does come to things, Director Baker, like potholes, you know, I guess we can, as much as possible, you know, take the credit and take the blame for certain things. But when it comes to our broader planning, this is a community endeavor altogether. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, questions, we're good. So just a reminder here, first I want to say thank you to Manager Smith and staff for coming back, as you said you would, from our retreat and trying to provide some follow-up on that and clarification. And the idea that we're going to continue to have these discussions as we go forward and continue to have clarification on that. So we have come to the end of our agenda here for this community hall meeting. And our business meeting starts in 45 minutes at 7 o'clock. Reminder, another opportunity for public comments at that meeting either. If you're present here in the chambers, you can call in. So once again, thank you. Good to see everybody, and I'll see you in a few minutes when adjourned.